Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for Monday, May 20, 2024. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising and taping tonight's meeting for rebroadcast on Channel 6 and streaming live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. Since this meeting is both audio and videotaped to form a complete record for possible appeal to City Council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission will need to come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, and give their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission is a volunteer, independent body appointed by council whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All action by the commission can be appealed to the City Council. At this time, I'd like to introduce members of the Planning Commission. On my far left is Ken Lackey, our Assistant Secretary. Next is Carol Fisher, our Secretary. On my immediate left is Connie Gah, the Recording Secretary. I'm Don Rethman, the Chair. On my right is Troy Urbis, Vice Chair. And on his right is Ray Waskey, Commissioner. Members of staff present here this evening: Tom Robillard, Director of Planning and Development. Next to him is David Roller, City Planner. And next to him is Ryan Hamzy, City Planner. Our first item on the agenda here this evening is old business. It is the approval of the minutes from the March 18, 2024 meeting. Do I have any comments on the minutes presented here this evening? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Urbis?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is new business. It is a conditional use for 940 East David Road. It is PC-24-005, and it is a public hearing. So with the staff report, Mr. Roller?
Thank you, Mr. Rethman. The applicant is proposing a conditional use amendment for Alter High School located at 940 East David Road. Alter High School is an existing approved conditional use located within an established residential neighborhood. Actually, it surrounds it on all sides of the campus. The amendment would allow the expansion of the existing parking located at the northeast corner of the campus nearest David and Renwood, the intersection that you see there. The number of parking spaces would increase from 35 to 180. The size of the proposed expansion constitutes a major change as defined within Section 115311 of the City of Kettering zoning code. This requires a public hearing and a review and action by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission can approve, approve with conditions, continue, table, or deny the proposal. And just a reminder, Planning Commission has the ability to add or tighten any standard in order to mitigate potential negative impacts of the development, but cannot waive or loosen any standards. Before we get into it, it's also important for us to note that in 2008, Alter expanded their central parking area and added some athletic fields, track and a synthetic turf field. Variances were needed and were granted by the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals. The list of conditions to allow the expansion was extensive, and that was included in your packet for your review, just to make sure that you were aware of it. We aren't actually addressing the athletic field as part of this request, but it may be relevant at some point in the future, as well as it may come up at some point this evening. So I felt that it was prudent to go ahead and give you a heads-up on that. Before we get into the analysis, do you have any questions at this time?
Any questions for Mr. Roller at this time?
No.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Here you'll see on the screen, this is what the applicant has submitted to us, showing their proposed expansion. Again, it was going from 35 existing spaces to a total of 180. The access points are existing. There'd be no change that they're proposing to the existing access points, so all of that would remain. So basically, it's just an expansion from the existing parking lot north out towards David and also over to the east towards Renwood. So you can see that there. Any questions on the proposed layout? The proposal is required to comply with the approval criteria set forth in Section 115308. That's a list of approval criteria for conditional uses. There's nine total. There's items A through I that are required to be complied with. So we'll just go ahead and get into those. The first is Criteria A, and that is that the proposed conditional use shall comply with all applicable regulations of the zoning code. We feel that this condition can be met conditionally. Right now, the existing conditional use is compliant. It's permitted. However, the site has deficiencies in regards to zoning standards, but these deficiencies are required to be addressed as part of the permitting.
Can you just hold up for a little bit until the crowd calms down? We'll make sure that everybody can hear what's going on.
Certainly.
All right. Thanks, Dave.
I'll just back up one second. As I was stating, the existing conditional use is already approved. It's permitted. It's there. However, the site does have some deficiencies in regards to some zoning standards, but those deficiencies are required to be brought into compliance through any kind of development action. So if there's a permit to construct the parking lot, those deficiencies are going to need to be addressed. So we feel that this standard can be satisfied, even though it's not right now. So we feel like that one is conditionally satisfied. Criteria B: The proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located and shall have no more adverse effects on health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the neighborhood, or shall be no more injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood than would any other use permitted by right within the same district. Alter High School has stated that the proposed parking expansion is desired in order to bring students onto the campus to help reduce students that are parking throughout the neighborhood and on the surrounding streets. And while this may reduce parking pressure in the surrounding neighborhood, it does also serve to concentrate those vehicles into one location. And incidentally, it's also all at the same time. Those students are arriving at campus generally at the same time, so we feel that that could contribute or at least add to some of the congestion that's already there. The lone access point for the proposed lot is located near the main entrance for St. Charles Church School and Alter High School, and we feel that this could lead to further congestion. Our engineering department has received numerous complaints regarding traffic congestion, especially at the David Road intersection with Ackerman. Traffic tends to back up there, and sometimes it backs up the hill towards Wingview. And so our recommendation on this is that we take a little bit more time to look into this, to make sure that we're not, at least not making the problem worse. And if there is a chance to reduce some congestion, maybe we can take that opportunity to make the problem a little bit less. So we do recommend further study on this particular criteria. Criteria C is that adequate utility shall be provided. There's no utilities that are being proposed as part of this. The site's already developed, and no new improvements are being proposed for public utilities. So we feel that's satisfied. Criteria D: Adequate measures shall be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to prevent traffic hazards and to prevent traffic congestion on the public roads. As was just mentioned, we do feel that this does need some further study. The site is served by several access points, but primarily is served by the two access points that are near each other on David Road. The area does frequently become congested at peak times, and the introduction of potentially 135 additional vehicles at peak time into this area may lead to additional congestion. So we do feel that this warrants some further study. So we do not feel that this is satisfied at this time. Criteria E: The proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. It isn't, so that one's met. Criteria F: The proposed use shall not injure the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. Alter High School is already using the site. Parking is already occurring on the site, so this proposal simply expands that, so it's not really changing anything. However, in regards to the property values, that's not something that we maintain records of. We don't monitor property values on that kind of individualized scale. We might keep track of something like that more on a citywide scale, but anecdotally, that's something that we don't feel would be affected. Other instances in other places elsewhere in the community, home values don't appear to be affected or substantially diminished when they're located near parking lots. So we don't think that that is anything that we need to worry about in this case. So we do feel that this is satisfied. Criteria G: The proposed use shall not impede the orderly development and improvement of surrounding property or uses permitted within the zoning district. We don't feel that this will have any effect on that, so we do feel that this one's satisfied. Criteria H: The establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed use shall not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. We do feel that traffic-related issues do warrant further study, but everything else there can be satisfied. Criteria I, and this is the last one: The public interests and welfare supporting the proposed use shall be sufficient to outweigh the individual interests that are adversely affected by the establishment of the proposed use. Again, we feel that further study is needed here in order to make that determination. It's not that we don't feel that it could ever meet it, but we want to make sure that we get it right. So we think that having some further study on this by somebody who is specialized in this area does seem like something that we need to have. So at this point, we don't feel that that requirement is satisfied either. In summary, the issues were, at this time, not able to meet all of the requirements. More information we feel is needed to be able to make a good decision. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Roller? Mr. Lackey?
No, right now.
Mr. Fisher?
Okay. I have one.
Yeah?
For Mr. Roller. The traffic studies that you talked about, will those be done by our own traffic engineers in-house, or would we be using some outside consultants?
An investigation of the traffic issues and possible congestion, that would be performed by an outside consultant. It would be prepared. The results would come back, and they would be brought to you along with their recommendations and our recommendations as well.
Okay. Okay. I think that's good. We want as many eyes on this as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Urbis?
At one point, you had mentioned an additional 135 cars. Aren't these cars already parking on either Renwood or David?
Some of those vehicles are. Some of those vehicles are, from our understanding, some of those vehicles are in other locations as well. They could be all there. We don't have any evidence that tells us one way or the other exactly, but those cars are finding their way, you know, different times along those streets, whereas all of them would be concentrated into one access. It is a one-way access, so everything comes in at that one point.
Right. And just for, I guess, point of comparison, Fairmont High School, their parking, how many access points or egress points are there from that? I'm assuming that's a much larger parking area. And I don't necessarily need an answer on this, but just as I was reviewing the materials here and sort of the impact, thinking, are there points of comparison that commissioners can review?
Certainly. The amount of access points, you mean in total or on Schroyer or on Lincoln Park? Okay.
Total.
Yeah. The main parking, there's two access points on Lincoln Park, and I believe there's two access points on Schroyer as well.
Okay. Cool.
There's an additional access point at the north end of the campus on Schroyer as well, but that is a limited access point for the north end of the campus.
Okay. All right. Unless, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
That's right. When we talk about the traffic study, will they also, beside looking at car counts and things of that nature, would they look at recommendations to how to improve, like maybe a de-acceleration lane, right-turn lane, only things of that nature? Will that be part of their study or recommendations?
Yeah. Those would be things that they would be looking at. Additionally, if there's things that you think that would need to be in there, if you think that additional study of the traffic is needed, that certainly, those are things that you could instruct us to, as we work with an applicant and their consultant, that we could look at.
Okay. And then also around the perimeter, the way the lot is positioned there to the north, are you looking at anything, because it's green space now, now you're going to asphalt, obviously, so are you looking at anything landscaping, berms, anything around the perimeter of that nature to consider as well as they try to look at that lot from across the street?
Right now, we're kind of focused in on making sure that we get the traffic taken care of, but that's definitely something that we want to look at.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
That triggered a thought in my mind. Since we're paving over a large area, is there any issue concerning retention, water retention?
I'm glad you brought that up. Yes, we do have that as a concern. Stormwater, part of our engineering department has noted that we need to provide greater amount of stormwater detention on the site and to possibly redesign the proposal as it is right now. So yeah, stormwater is a consideration that needs to be taken into account. It's not necessarily something that we would look at in that kind of granular scale here at the Planning Commission, but they are required to comply with our stormwater requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If none of the commissioners have any additional questions for Mr. Roller at this time, we'll ask if the applicant has anyone who wishes to come forward and address the commission. Now's your opportunity. Just ask you to come forward to the lectern, and for everybody who's wishing to speak, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Jason Sheets, 23 Wayne Avenue, Moda Four Design. We're fortunate enough to be working with Alter on this project. Thank you for taking the time to review this, and thanks, Mr. Roller, for putting together the presentation. I think in your packet is also a summary letter that we drafted. In short, not much more to add from that letter, but I will touch on a few things. Mr. Roller noted a future developments, future expansion on the site that is in the works in planning. There is a program in place for all the things that Alter would like to have developed on the site as far as uses and building types. That is not finalized. That is down the road. That is millions away, which means time away for now. We don't have a definite timeline, but that is a variable that we can't control. We'd love to keep it as short as possible, meaning all the dollars are there. Those dollars are not there yet. We don't know when they will be, but we hope to fundraise to get to that point. So this particular piece, the parking lot, would certainly support whatever occurs there as a byproduct to its construction, but its primary goal was, as Mr. Roller stated, to get those cars off of the streets, those student vehicles off the streets. Anyone that's in the neighborhood knows that as the year goes, it's essentially sophomore students as they start to become of driving age. The current parking does not accommodate for that full student body. So it gets up to, along the street, near the end of the school year, like this last week, it can get as high as about 60 cars. So that new parking lot would accommodate plus-minus 135, but it's really those 60 cars that are the focus, to get those off the street. So as much as there is potential for, if there's concerns on traffic, I think anyone that's been through there, that two-lane, that tight two-lane road on David as well as Renwood gets really tight when there's cars lined up all the way through there. So we're concerned about the traffic in that sense and the safety of vehicles running through there in the mornings. So, and as Mr. Roller noted, the access points do not change. They're currently one way in, one way out. The drive aisles are going to be widened so that there is more room once you get on campus for bypass and if there is stacking and drop-off. So we're really talking about, as of right now, 60 max. At the beginning of the year, that's maybe 30. So for reference, that is, those two points, we didn't want to add any curb cuts, especially near the intersection. That's usually a bad thing, so we didn't want to look at doing anything like that. And I know you made a reference to the Fairmont parking lot. I think, I don't know the exact number, it's somewhere between 600 and 700 spots, and that has two access points, as stated, off of Lincoln Park, so it's almost four or five times larger than this. As far as any other pieces, the stormwater, as Mr. Roller noted, we already have the civil engineer that's designed the parking lot working on that, already made adjustments. So those will also get resubmitted as part of the construction permit process, just for reference. I know it's not part of this discussion, but happy to answer any other questions after people have had a chance to speak, but do you have any questions currently?
Any questions for Mr. Sheets? No. Mr. Urbis?
When you talk about future growth and what they're looking to do later on down the road, would that require additional parking spots to be added to this front lot here? Or do you think in your general, just in general, I know I can't hold you to it, you don't know the future yet, are you looking at a net gain or decrease with that future work down the road?
A great question. So you're saying in reference to the 135 number, right? So we think we're going to lose some spots on the interior parking lot because, depending on the final plan, you know, where the buildings hit, curb geometry might adjust on that interior parking lot. So we could lose anywhere from one row of the, right now it's diagonal parking. Do you have any? It's a little tight. But we could lose, we don't have a final number, but I'm sure we're going to lose some, ideally, meaning we get big enough facilities to accommodate all the needs. So it could, it will definitely still net at least 60, but we don't know, depending on what the final plan is, how much it adjusts. Also, if it adjusts too much, it probably gets restriped and relayed out at a 90-degree scenario, which is a little bit more efficient. You know, it's just based upon those intervals of the parking run. So depends on that final design, I would imagine some are lost. I just can't, I don't know what that final number is.
Fair enough. That's all I was looking for.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions by the commissioners for Mr. Sheets? Thank you, Mr. Sheets.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Please come forward. Give your name and address for the record.
My name is Lourdes Lambert. I'm the principal and CEO of Archbishop Alter High School. My home address is 90 Tyler Court, Springboro, Ohio 45066. I first thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you to Mr. Roller for the presentation. I do want to add that we're great partners with St. Charles School, and we have already been in conversations about staggering, starting, and ending times of school to alleviate some of the congestion that this will cause. I think it would be a very simple, and we would be the ones to do it. We would not inconvenience the elementary school. We would be happy to move ours, knowing my teenagers, move it back a little bit so that they could get a little bit extra sleep, and that that will alleviate some of the congestion that we're talking about. But we really want to be good partners in the neighborhood and make sure that those cars are off the street so that the neighbors don't have the blind turns that they currently have when they exit their homes, and that our students are safely on campus. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Do you have a good feel for how many students are actually driving to school? Do you issue parking permits? Do you count cars out on the road? I'm curious.
We do count cars on the road, and Jason is right. It's between 60 and 65 at this time of year. Our juniors and seniors are accommodated in the back lot. This is primarily for the sophomores, and in the fall, we don't have that many that drive, but at this time of year, and in fact, I'm very popular this week, as I've told them all, as the seniors have graduated, to park inside to alleviate that for the neighbors because I know it's very difficult for the neighbors and our police officers when it says, "Do not park beyond that point," and sometimes they do not read.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Lambert?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, if there's members of the neighbors who would like to come forward and speak, now's your opportunity. Just ask you, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Linda Patrick. I live at 1019 Pepper Hill, and, Lourdes, we neighbors want to be good neighbors to you, but we have to work together. My first question, also, we could hardly, in the peanut gallery, we could hardly hear you, and I were hearing it. We couldn't hear you because your head was focused this way. Could they turn up the sound? Okay.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
That's done. My question is, how will the students, where will the students turn into the new parking lot? Off of David?
Yes. Right now, the proposed access point is in the same access point that it is now. If you look at the screen, on the left-hand side, there's an access point there off of David Road.
Okay.
That's existing right now. That would be the entrance, and then the exit point would be on the extreme right of the screen. That would be on Renwood.
On Renwood?
Yes.
Because, living on Pepper Hill, in the mornings from 20 minutes till 8 until two minutes before 8, cars are zooming down Pepper Hill, and then in the afternoon, they're zooming back up. And I have called, I will admit, I have called the police before because there are Kettering school buses that stop and pick up young children on Pepper Hill. So my concern, sometime, somebody's going to run into a bus or going to hit a child. And one time, I definitely did call the police because they were drag racing up Pepper Hill. You know, teenagers will be teenagers, but you know, let's be safe, all of us be safe. And I know that when Alter is getting out in the afternoons, there is a backup from David Road onto Renwood because parents of freshmen and sophomores are picking up their kids, but you can't hardly get onto Renwood because of this backup. Is there any way that, you know, that could be alleviated? And the letter that, or the note that the neighbors received, you know, they have phases, and we've gone through with Alter, I think Phase 1 a few years ago? Yes. And so, but in the phases that they're talking about in this letter, that, you know, they want to build a baseball field and then a 3,500-capacity grandstand. My question is, what's that going to be for? And we're not here tonight for that, but my question is, what's that going to be used for? You know, are there going to be, in the future, football games that Alter then won't have to go to Fairmont to play some of their games? So, that's all in the pot that we're stirring, you know, as neighbors. And I hate to tell on the police department, but they are not policing Renwood, because of late, I've seen cars from the sign that says no parking beyond this, there's five or six or seven cars parking there. I think, you know, as teenagers will be, let's see how far we can go. And so, you know, that's my concern. And we want to be good neighbors, and I think we have, and, you know, we have the Alter Fest that starts Friday night until Sunday night, you know, we haven't complained much about that. And, you know, we've discussed things about the lighting with Alter, and they've tried to do what they said they would in our agreement, but we have a neighborhood agreement with Alter. And so, you know, we have to work together, because we're close-knit.
Yeah.
Close-knit in where we're living, and our concerns are, you know, later on, you know, in the 3,500-capacity for bleachers, what's that do to our property values? And so that's, you know, my questions, because who wants to live there, you know, with all these cars zooming down and all that? So, just my concern about the traffic and, you know, they're landlocked. But I don't know if any of you know that, I think Alter owned from Renwood to Ackerman at first, and then the Archbishop at that time, in his goodness, his wise thinking, said, "Well, Alter won't need all that land." So then, he built a church, St. Charles, and then the school. So, Alter is landlocked, but that wasn't our doing, we weren't there. So, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And one thing for anybody else who wishes to address the commission regarding any, you feel free to come up, you want to speak, I just want to sort of, just put out there what the commission has received. What we received here, and the only thing we've received from staff, is just regarding the expansion of the parking. So, any information regarding any future phases, we have not received any information, so unless there's been something in the newspaper, that's the extent of our information. So if tonight, we can sort of keep our, you know, comments focused on this parking expansion, because that's all we have as a commission to reference. So, with that, if you can give me your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Connie Jackson. I live at 4524 Wingview Lane in Kettering, 45429, one block from Alter.
And I'm Brian Jackson, I'm Connie's husband.
Same address.
Left-hand person tonight, 4524 Wingview.
So we just have a couple of quick comments. First, I wanted to thank, thank that, thank you, or thankful we got the notice about this expansion proposal, because we must live in the perimeter that was under the notification, because all of this was new to us neighbors. Anyone we spoke to was not aware of any of this. So, we're happy that we got that notice, even though it was what we call a short notice. And I wanted to just say one comment about the criteria F, about the, in the diminished property values, and, you know, there was a comment that, you know, there was nothing, they were fine with that. And, you know, we all live within Alter, and we are good neighbors, but in my mind, when you're replacing a huge green lawn with a parking lot of 180 spaces, that's a little bit of a, I would say that would diminish some property values. So, what, we came up with three things, will you read this, because I'm nervous?
Sure. So we had, excuse me, we had three items that we were interested in getting more information. Basically, number one, current traffic congestion is unsafe and a serious problem before and after school, because we live on Wingview Lane, the cul-de-sac, and you cannot cross David safely between 7:30 and about 10 after 8, for a number of reasons. But anyway, expansion of the front north parking lot, adding additional drivers and removal of the second traffic route behind the school in later phases, sorry, would worsen the problem. So we were requesting a traffic study be conducted prior to the approval of the parking lot expansion and future project phases. Request number one, reducing the number of parking spaces proposed, limiting the use of the parking expansion spaces, limiting lighting and landscaping to create a buffer between the sidewalks and the parking lot on the north and east sides. Number three, we request Alter High School present the Unite the Nights project plans to its Alter neighbors and city planning together for discussion and input. Alter neighbors have invested interest in how the whole project would affect our community and neighborhood.
And then I have one more question, and I don't know if anyone really knows this, but if you, if, you know, the goal from Alter is to get all the parking off the street, and clearly it is an issue very narrow, you know, going down, what, east on David, but will there be then no parking signs put up on David so that they cannot park there? You know, if that's the goal, to get the cars off the street, then will we limit and not allow that parking? So I think that's what we have.
All right, thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I forgot, we have some signatures from a few neighbors, does someone want this for the record?
If you want to give it to Ms. Gahl.
And it's regarding, okay, thank you.
Don, I'd like to respond to her question.
Okay, Mr. Woski says he has a response.
I'd like to respond to your question, and it was a very good question, about the no parking signs. Do we have an answer to her question? Is that part of the planning?
That's something that we don't have an answer at this time for, that's something that we could look into, if you want us to look into that.
I think we should, I think that's a very good question.
My name is Andy Terzoli from 913 East David Road. I just wanted to say a few things, Rhonda can join me, too. In my humble opinion, if you're going to add more parking, I think you need to add more access lanes, because right now, it looks like to me that Renwood is going to be bogged down, because that's the only exit from there, okay? That's one thing. I will also confirm, and Rhonda will too, the student drivers there are terrible. We face the church driveway. They peel, yeah, they peel rubber all the time. Maybe I would suggest that Alter maybe encourage carpooling, if that's possible, to get the numbers down. Maybe the other possibility is do this thing in phases, rather than adding the entire thing, maybe just add one more piece. We drove through it, there are 45 spots, there really are. We assume that that's staff parking up front there, we assume, not student. It doesn't say reserved on it, but we sort of maybe guessed that was the case. You have any comments about?
The other thing is, we had, yeah, I'm Rhonda Terzoli. We had thought possibly they need a crosswalk, I know there's one at the corner, and the school children use the crosswalk there, and they have crossing guards and all that. But, we have a walkway that goes past our house to the St. Charles rectory behind us. Our house used to be the St. Charles offices, and the priests lived behind in the rectory. So there are priests that walk up and down the sidewalk, and I'm really afraid for them.
Afraid for us, too.
And the priests have said, you know, you don't cross the street at, you know, 3:00 or 3:15, when the high school kids are getting out, because it's very dangerous. And I, you know, right now, St. Charles has their walk, or their drivers going all one direction in. Alter has theirs making left-hand turns onto David, which can be very dangerous.
Left-hand turn.
And right-hand turns. And we have our Rollators, and when we go, you know, I wouldn't think of going over to Alter at 3:00 or 3:15 with that, because you might get run over, seriously. And I'm worried about the priests trying to cross, you know, I don't know if a crosswalk would help, obviously they're very careful, but...
Well, even for the St. Charles elementary school kids, this is a different issue, though. To put a crosswalk from the walkway that we have next to 913, over to the St. Charles area, a crosshatch, I think that would help. The other thing, I probably need a comment about the Alter kids, they do not stop at the stop sign. When they do come out, the St. Charles church, they just zoom through. And as I say, I think there needs to be some heavy education of those kids, not only for the parking, but for the driving. The other thing I would probably suggest, with any kind of a parking lot like that, where it's possible for people to head in and then all back out approximately at the same time, that Alter make the parking back in only, because chances are, the people will be arriving for school at more of a dispersed time than when they leave, you know? And that way, they can safely pull out of the spots. It works out very well, I've seen that in places where I worked. And I see this every time I go to the grocery store, you know, somebody's backing out and they can't see, whereas if they were to back in and then head out, they can definitely see.
I do think it's a good idea if you have the Alter students off of David, you know, going one direction, and then they go out Renwood the other. That could be a problem, though, for access there, off Renwood, you know, onto David. I'm almost thinking you need another exit onto David somewhere in the middle of the parking lot, because I think that is just going to be too many cars, everybody leaving at 3:05, 3:10, whatever it is. And, you know, young people, I remember when I was a young person, you know, they get impatient, and they don't always think about safety, where, you get to be our age, you know, you worry about getting run over.
Right. Another suggestion about the lady that was talking about parking, on the north side of David, the sign says no parking between like 8:00 or 8:00 and noon or something like that, basically to prevent the Alter kids from parking on the north side of David. If they put a similar sign on the south side of David, just say no parking during the times when the kids arrive for school, that would at least allow neighbors to park there.
Or the St. Charles.
Or the St. Charles, teachers or...
People, or whoever are going to church for some function.
Yeah, David is not a two-lane street. It is a one-lane street with parking on the sides, you know? I mean, one option would be to, somebody can think about, make David two lanes with no parking on either side with stripes, but it's not that way now. Right now, it is one lane only, right? What else? That's all we see? Okay, we rest our case.
All right, thank you.
Since Dr. Terzuli, you and your wife have some excellent ideas, maybe meet with staff and kind of convey all, because there was a lot that you said.
Alter staff.
No, with city staff.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Because you have a lot of...
I talked to you on the phone, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have a bird's eye view, being right across the street.
Yeah, we're watching.
Yeah, because you have a lot of ideas packed in there in a very short time, they need to unpack that and translate that for the city staff.
Your name was on the announcement, right?
Yes, yes, it was.
I called you yesterday.
Yes, we did speak.
We can set it, by the way.
And I did have a question for you. The very first point you made, you said that, something about adding an access lane or something onto Renwood? I didn't quite follow that.
That was an exit, and I think the Alter, or the person that spoke, said that going onto Renwood, that would be exit only?
Yes, that is exit only.
Is that true?
It currently is exit only.
Oh.
Yes, currently is.
And, but right now, the David Road access is right and left turn.
Oh, got you.
And the left turn can be very dangerous.
Got you, right.
Especially if there's cars parked along the street, which that's, would take them off of there.
Yeah, there are several drivers. St. Charles has a driveway that is two-way.
Two ways, right.
But the Alter driveway, which goes in front of the school, is one-way loop. So it's in on David and then out on Renwood.
Right, right.
But the St. Charles...
That does access to back parking.
They have a, they have a block when the St. Charles students are leaving school, the one that goes on to Ackerman.
Right.
But I assume they remove that barrier when the students, because they're, they get out a little earlier, like 20 minutes earlier or something.
Yeah, we've seen the drawings, which you probably have not, but we've gotten that at the planning commission level, yep, yep. But thank you, but please confer with our city staff.
Yeah, I'll call you there.
Hello, my name's Lisa Hoover, I'm at 4532 Wingview Lane, and I'm kind of Connie's next-door neighbor. So we are affected by Alter, too. We love Alter, we moved there because of Alter, we love Alter. But the issue we're having is really, we understand the parking for the underclassmen that go up the street, we agree, and we think we can meet that, you know, maybe not adding all of the parking, but some of them, to make it safe for everybody, because we do walk that area quite a bit, and we do see the traffic that does happen there, and we are also affected by the traffic, we're held hostage in Wingview until the school gets in, so we are part of that, too. I just want to reiterate that piece, because that is important. I don't normally public speech, so I'm sorry. So, one thing I did want to point out, though, and I know we're not supposed to really talk about Phase 2 and 3, but I think you can't look at this, because immediately, as soon as I read the notice I got, I automatically know how many people park on the street, we walk it every day. So it's like, there is no way there is that many parking spots that's needed. So when I read it, first thing I heard in my head was they're expanding for something else, which is fine, I totally believe in growth of our community, growth of schools, but all I could think of was that's just going to bring more everyday traffic to our area, which makes it very unsafe, again, like we've talked about with traffic, and we also talk about pedestrians, because at the same time, we have children and we have the residents that try to walk the area, that makes it tough. But we can't put aside Phase 2 and 3 with, completely, and I know we're not supposed to talk about that, but if you look at all the public information that's out there, there are, there's our figures that show possibly pass going into Alter eliminated in the back, which means that highly affects this, because if you're going to take access points away in the back, then that traffic has to go somewhere. So we are, again, talking about the stress of this whole area. So I just wanted to point out, we can't throw 2 and 3 away, Phase 2 and 3 away, when we look at this, because you look and build for the future, get the kids off the street, parking safely, that's great, but we could accommodate that with not almost, what, 60 extra parking than really needed? So, I just wanted to share that. Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, thanks.
Okay.
I wrote a statement, so I'll read it. We'll give your name and address for the record, please.
So first line, actually.
Awesome.
My name is Michael Halleck Jr., I'm a resident of 4601 Ackerman Boulevard, which is adjacent to St. Charles School and very near to David Road, and the proposed changes to Alter High School made by Jason Sheets of Moda4 Design. I've lived at my residence for eight years and in the Kettering community for 20 years. I'd like to speak in support of this proposal. I think that Alter High School has been a consummate neighbor to my family and me since we moved to this neighborhood. It consistently reminds its students, and I've seen the emails from Lourdes and the phone calls to students, to new drivers, to adhere to posted traffic signage and to abide by all posted speed limits. Alter routinely modifies school and athletic schedules to adjust for concerns from neighbors surrounding campus activities. Additionally, during events like Alter Fest, an event in which this community takes great pride, this school goes out of its way to notify neighbors of increased neighborhood activity, particularly increased foot traffic in congested streets, and provides a point of contact to address concerns of neighbors regarding the same. I think that's very important and a very prudent action by a good neighbor. Now I feel it's our opportunity to assist Alter. The proposal in front of the commission is in line with the aforementioned behavior. Alter proactively is attempting to address street congestion on David Road... Alter proactively is attempting to address street congestion on David Road before, during, and after the school day. Its proposal, in my opinion, seeks to add a new parking lot that will reduce congestion during the school year and provide its students safe off-street parking. In doing this, Alter seeks to reduce street congestion in our community at its own cost and continue its strenuous desire to be a good neighbor to our community. While I do have a hard time understanding and objection to this proposal, I do understand that some folks are often resistant to change and may be negatively impacted by the light construction, noise, and activities. I think that change is a constant in our society, and it separates us by those who oppose it. And as to the construction, Kettering is no stranger to construction projects all over this city. I think we all drive by them or at least live through them, and I think a temporary cost for a long-term gain in terms of safety is no reason to oppose this proposal. I'd ask the Planning Commission to approve the proposal on behalf of a neighbor who's been more than gracious to my family and me from the time we joined the community, and I think that the proposal provides a sound solution to known problems and will benefit all involved, including Kettering citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Marks, and I live at 4541 Ackerman, next to that guy. And I just want to say that I applaud the Planning Commission and the recommendation for a traffic study. I think it's vitally important. I also think there's been a lot of good, common-sense proposals made by a number of the neighbors, including if we've got 60 cars parked on Renwood, 60 slots are really all we need. So we're expanding this well beyond the need. So I think a traffic study is very important. I'm concerned about the Renwood exit and the David entrance. I don't think you have to, I'm certainly not a traffic consultant, but I think you just look at the logistics of that, and you have to sit back and think what's going on. But to get the cars off the street, that's good, but we don't need all that many slots to do that, and there should be no parking signs if that's the case. So I await the study from the traffic consultant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am Bob Gottes. I live at 4700 Renwood Drive, and everything that has been mentioned here.
Excuse me, we weren't able to get your name. Could you give us your name again? Bob Gottes?
Gottes.
G-O-T-T-E-S. Thank you.
Most of the concerns I have written down here have been addressed, but there's some other ones that have found, have come up after everybody has spoken. The exit after school on Renwood, is that going to be a right turn only?
We can get your answer.
I'm just asking, you know, is that, I mean, I can't imagine coming down Renwood, going north. Of course, you know, most of the neighborhood just stays off the street for a half hour.
We don't have any information as to whether that would be left, right, or all? That hasn't been proposed at this time.
But that's going to add to the number of cars exiting on to Renwood, and it's going to lessen the amount in the morning, right? Because there's no left turn or there's no way of getting in that parking lot unless you come off of David, or off, yeah, off of David. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That was one of the concerns I had, was being David Road as a boulevard, you know, you could only turn right out of there. But then also had, you know, you turn right out of the parking lot on to David, and you turn right on to Renwood, because I don't know what percentage come from the south, but probably 60% of the students live south of that high school. And what is the, what is, do we keep, do they keep all the trees in the park, in the front yard right now, or how does that work?
The proposal right now would most likely eliminate most of those trees that are in the way. Those would be taken down. Trees would be required to be put back. Some trees could be saved. I haven't seen an analysis.
But is there any, like I think somebody else mentioned it, is there any idea of maybe putting new plannings of some kind in there?
Yes, new plants would be required. They would be, they would, those would be necessary.
All right. Yeah, and that, you know, it's, like somebody else mentioned, that we don't go that way because, you know, when, like, school's getting out, because there's so many people picking up the freshmen and the sophomores, they take the right lane there. You know, and you, well, we don't come home that way, for sure, because, you know, there's no way, you know, there's 10, 12 cars sitting here, and you've got to get in that left lane and buzz by all of them before somebody comes down Renwood going north. That, you know, I don't know if that'll be a problem in this respect or not, because if everybody's coming out of that lot on to Renwood, you know, there may, there may not even be room to get out, because these cars are sitting there waiting to pull in and pick up the freshman and then the sophomore. Just a thought. Now, you know, I'm not against the parking lot, trust me, but I, and I was, I heard the gentleman say earlier, we're here for the parking lot only, which, you know, that the parking lot, how much of it is just to alleviate the on-parking, on-street parking compared to the, all these, you know, all Phase A, B, you know, all this, six other phases? You know, that's, that is one of my concerns, that, I guess my concern is to, like somebody said, you know, 180 parking places, they don't need that many, but are they thinking in terms of, we may need them for the fieldhouse and the grandstand? And that's, let's see, what I get, like I say, it's a lot of, so many things. Yeah, like I say, it'd be the, be more so in the afternoon, you know, and then I would think, being, if you've got to get in from David, you know, it's going to be entrance only. So that would alleviate some of the morning traffic on Renwood, which is really, but like you say, it's, the next phase, all the phases are not on the agenda.
I, I have no information, so we couldn't speak intelligently about it at this point. So, yeah, what's been advertised and what we have is this parking lot.
Sure, okay. I just don't want it to be a downhill slide from here if we okay the park, if you okay the parking lot, you know? I don't want to.
Understand your concern.
Because that is quite a change.
Yep.
Okay, I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the commission? If so, now's your opportunity.
Now, this is on a different issue than parking.
Okay.
All right, so my name's Craig Reason. I live at 3017 Blackhawk Road here in Kettering, Ohio. This is like my fourth year here now. I really like this city a lot. Come here from Indiana, Muncie, Indiana. And so I also own the Ohio Tire and Rubber Company. And so since I left Muncie, I've been looking for a building over here in Kettering, and I found one about a mile, mile and a half from my house that works perfect for me. But there's some issues with this building. We have, I've worked with Tom quite a bit on some of these issues, so there are some apartments that are to the left of this building that are closer than 50 feet, which.
I hate to interrupt you here, but this is, this is a public hearing regarding the parking lot expansion, so we do have an item on the agenda.
That's what I asked before. I said it was different than the parking.
Yeah, I was aware of that, but I was a little slow on the uptake, so there, once we sort of get through some of these items, we'll say, you know, if anyone likes to address anything not on the written agenda, so that's, that's the time for that one, okay?
All right.
Appreciate it, though. No, look forward to hearing from you, yeah.
Hello, my name's Leanne Jones. I actually live in Spring Valley. I'm here with my mother tonight. She lives on Renwood, 4500 Renwood. Her name is Barbara Louves. And my question is about the conditional use of the parking lot. Who does the conditional use actually belong to, when and if it's approved?
Mr. Roller, can you address that?
Is there a years on a conditional use?
A conditional use approval basically grants the ability to operate a use in a certain area that is not permitted by right, but is permitted with the idea that additional conditions could be placed on that use to mitigate potential negative impacts. A conditional use approval, if it's granted, is good for a certain amount of time, I believe it's 365 days. If that approval is not constructed within that time, then it expires, and then it's back to whatever it was before. So there's a period when that must be installed, and then it goes away. But if it's, if it's constructed, whatever improvement is there, then it can remain indefinitely until such time as either the law changes and would make that use non-conforming, or if that use becomes abandoned. So the use leaves for a period of greater than six months or more.
And I didn't hear any mention of overhead lights in the parking lot. Will the, will there be lights? Will they be on a timer? And was a discussion of turning them off at night? The tennis courts, being on the corner of Renwood and David, the tennis courts behind my mother's house, and I grew up in that house, you get used to it, just like you would get used to a train running by the house, but this will be a new thing to get used to. If there are lights, there probably should be lights if there's going to be an approval, I think for the safety of children, the kids, they're not children necessarily, but no one needs to be accosted in any parking lot that large, so. But I didn't hear anything about overhead lights, and if so, what the stipulations would be, and that's all I have to say.
So parking lot lighting, any lighting that would need to be addressed, will need to meet the city of Kettering environmental standards, and those things are addressed in that, so.
Okay.
So, yes, though, if it comes to be, yes, it will comply with our standards.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the Planning Commission regarding this expansion of the parking at Alter High School? Going once, going twice. I don't know if there are any representative from Alter wishes to address any of the comments made, not a requirement?
Thank you. I would like to address the number of spaces. I think when we plan, we can't be short-sighted. We're always hoping to grow our community, and you can't simply plan for right now. You have to plan for the future as well. And with the expansion of the Ed Choice Scholarship, it has attracted more students to our school. So I would think that those spaces will also be used in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any Planning Commission comments, questions before we, all right, Mr. Erbys? All right, with that, then, do we have a recommendation, Mr. Roller?
Yes, I do. One thing I want to make sure, though, that I, that is mentioned before we get into the recommendation, and that is that we are recommending to continue with a request for further information. That doesn't mean that we are saying no. It just means we're asking for additional study, asking for more information so that we can have a better basis on which to make a decision. So just want to make sure everybody understands that. But with that, our recommendation is to continue the, to continue to a future meeting with a couple of conditions. The first condition being that traffic would be studied or investigated by the applicant to examine existing, current proposed, and future proposed plans. Such investigation be conducted by a licensed traffic engineer or transportation planner. The results would be then submitted to the Planning Commission for review, and a public hearing be conducted to examine the results and consider recommendations and possible actions. The second condition that we're asking is that such future public hearing would be re-advertised to ensure that the affected neighbors will have adequate opportunity to engage the results of the traffic investigation. That's, that's our recommendation.
So with regarding that, and with regarding the proposed motion, because the first line is to close the public hearing, do we want to close the public hearing? Is there a reason for that?
Uh, well.
I mean, if we have a condition, then, that it's re-advertised.
True. Didn't think about that one. It's a good point. If we close the public hearing.
It would have to be re-advertized.
Then it would have to be re-advertized.
But it's a condition.
So that's, I guess that would be up to you, what you, how you would want to proceed. It's belts and suspenders, so.
Mr. Robillard, do you care to weigh in?
You can always reopen the public hearing at any time.
Okay.
Before your final vote. So close the public hearing, we'll re-advertize, we'll reopen the public hearing at that future date.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, we've heard the recommended, the recommendation from staff. Any additional questions by members of the commission here? Yes, Mr. Erbys?
With this process, is there an idea of a timeline we're looking at here, or is there a urgency, or what do you think?
As far as timeline goes, I would imagine that the applicant would like it to be done as soon as possible. I can't speak for them on that, though, but that's, that's just my guess, my speculation. The, the idea, though, is that this, this doesn't necessarily have to be a full-blown traffic study. This is just more, let's call it a scaled-back version of that. We, we do want to examine some stuff that's here. We want to be able to have a better basis to make some recommendations or possible actions. If, if, if Planning Commission thinks that a full-blown traffic study is something that you want to recommend, we can certainly help with that, and we can incorporate that into the, into the suggested motion. But it may not, it may not be something that, that's, that in-depth needs to happen. Obviously, the more questions that are asked, the longer the process would take.
Right, that's the right thing.
So it really depends on, on. So it really depends on, on the scope that we have and, and what we're being asked to have the applicant provide. So if we're eliminating it to studying this particular parking lot and the traffic that's being generated current onsite and just this, that's probably an easier question to answer. We do have in here that we would like to take a look at the current proposed and future proposed plans. If you want to, if you don't think that that's something that we need to look at right now, you can certainly modify the motion.
Okay. Is there any safety data or any data we can look at from any existing traffic violation, accidents, anything like that you could, you could share with us at that time?
We can provide that, yes.
Okay. I think that'd be helpful for hearing the concerns they have out here, just to understand what has occurred out there.
I have a question. Is this a study that can be completed now? I mean, we're out of school now. I assume Alter High School is out of school or either going to be out of school within a day or two. Or does this, does this study have to wait until fall to be done? Or August to be done?
I think it's something that they could, they could take on now.
Okay.
You know, the, the modeling software and stuff, they can, they can probably be able to study that without necessarily having to go out and count cars onsite.
Okay.
Is it closed?
No, I mean, the public, public hearing is still open. So, Mr. Sheets?
Well, Mr. Roller answered beforehand. I was just gonna say, more set expectations for everyone. If, if in fact, we need to do a traffic, a full-blown traffic study to get to the root of, of all the concerns, whether founded or not, obviously, that would be done during the school year. School year ends tomorrow, Thursday. So, don't expect to see anything for at least three months then. If, yes. So, just set everyone's expectations so that, to sort of answer your question, but, so, Mr. Roller.
So I guess one of the things that Mr. Roller brought up, and in terms of, you know, how in-depth here, I mean, basically under the following conditions. I mean, it talks about current proposed and future proposed. Are we wanting the whole ball of wax? We, I mean, current proposed? Do we have an opinion?
How can we get a traffic study on the future plans if we haven't seen any future plans?
Well, and, and they don't necessarily have those. Well, so that's why I just wanted to say, you know, it was a little bit of a time bomb in there in terms of, you know, what ifs, if, you know, what ifs might, might never happen. And-
Yeah, I think we can only address what we have before.
Right. Yeah? Okay. So, I mean, if you want to take care of maybe doing a little line item strike there?
I think I can do that.
Okay. Any, any other concerns by commission regarding the proposed motion? If not, I will call for a motion to close the public hearing.
I got a point I want to make. Alter has to have an idea about the traffic issues. Somebody needs to speak out, you know, is my opinion.
With regards to what traffic issues?
The turn, you know, the turning, how they drive and, and all that type of thing. I mean, there has to be some data with the faculty at Alter High School. They must have some idea, because you're asking for a traffic report. They probably have some idea of what they could tell you about.
But don't you think that individual observation is one thing, but an educated traffic study is different?
Well, I'm, I'm, that's true. But I'm saying, you know, have there been students that have been reprimanded for their driving? Have there been accidents? I mean, do we have any statistics like that from Alter?
I don't know. It's impactful for us.
I mean, Alter's been there a long, long time. I mean, just a thought.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your comment.
I apologize for extending it. I don't want to send a late email before decisions are made. It's a, I forget, the, the use is contingent use? What was the-
Conditional use.
Conditional use. So then that parking lot would be conditionally used for students parking in the front. Only students parking there?
The conditional use means that that expansion of the parking is, will, once, if it gets approved, it's there. And there is no sort of restriction on, on who could park there.
Okay. So, but, so you're not going to take into account the second and third phases and those kind of things, and why they need 180 parking spaces. So, I mean, that's-
What we have before us is what we are taking a look at now. Anybody else wish to come down here before I close the public hearing? Because this is your opportunity to, to address the commission.
I mean, we are, we have-
Could you please come up to the microphone?
Connie Jackson again. And, you know, we had the three requests, the traffic study, notifying neighbor, or having input from neighbors, and I forget the third one. But I guess, David, I wonder, how can we do a traffic study if school's out of session?
Questions really should be addressed to myself as the chair of the commission.
I'm sorry. Okay, planning commission. How can we really do a traffic study if school's out of session? Because the, you know, all the activity that is hap, that happens will not, obviously, you know that.
The traffic study will be less about the behavior of the drivers and how the impact and the access points with the number of spaces and the probably traffic counts on both David and Renwood, how, how this would affect that. So, yeah.
Right. No, I, because I'm not saying anything about how anybody drives. I'm just talking about the number of drivers and the congestion.
I mean, they will look at it for, if, if this parking lot gets built out full, they will look at it, how does that, a full parking lot coming and going?
Right. Okay.
How it's, affects its traffic. So. Anybody else? All right. Once again, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move.
Second? Call the role, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Woski?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Erbus?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes. I believe, Mr. Lackey, you have a motion for us?
I do. It's a conditional use approval for Alter High School, 940 East David Road, whereas an application has been received from Jason Sheets, motive for design and architecture agent for Archbishop Alter High School, requesting approval for conditional use amendment located at 940 East David Road. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, and held a public hearing on May 20th, 2024. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a conditional use amendment to allow the expansion of the existing parking lot located in the northeast quadrant of the campus located nearest the intersection of East David Road and Wenwood, Renwood Drive, whereas the planning commission adopts the findings of fact presented by staff in their staff report, which is incorporated here into this motion. I move that the applicant's request for approval of a conditional use amendment to allow the expansion of the existing parking lot located in the northeast quadrant of the campus located near the intersection of East David Road and Wenwood Drive be continued with the following conditions. To condition one, traffic shall be studied by the applicant to examine existing and current proposed plans. Such investigation shall be conducted by a licensed traffic engineer or transportation planner. Results shall be submitted for review by the planning commission and a public hearing shall be conducted to examine the results and consider recommendations and possible actions. Condition two, such future public hearings shall be re-advertized to ensure that the affected neighbors will have adequate opportunity to engage the results of the traffic investigation. End of motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the role, please.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Erbus?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Woski?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes. So, we do have one more case here this evening. So if, you're all welcome to stay and listen to a possible replat, I will ask, though, if you want to exit, because this is open, that if you could sort of hold any conversations until you are actually out on the, the plaza. So appreciate everybody's comments this evening, and appreciate you all coming out. And with that, we'll sort of do the little song and dance while we wait for everybody to file out. Sure. You need a little, little pick-me-up there?
Yeah.
I mean, and if at any point during the proceedings, if you want to run the bathroom or take a brief break in the future.
I think that's ever been good.
move on to item number three on our agenda this evening, which is a lot split at 2800 Donation Circle. It is PC-24-007. Mr. Homsy?
Thank you, Chairman. Just before I get into it, this is a very straightforward request. Knowing the applicant could not be here this evening. But one of the reasons that, when I get to the recommendation, one of the conditions has kind of an interesting sunset clause included with it. And that's because we got the app, when we got the application, it's straightforward enough, but we want to give the utility reviewers a little bit more time to review it. And the applicant has gotten these, these conditions, and they're okay with all of them. They're working on meeting all of them as we speak. They just couldn't be here tonight. So the property in question, it's 2800 Donation Circle, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Research and Research Boulevard and Woodman Drive. It's about an 8.2 acre property. Currently, it contains the new, relatively new Life Connection Building, right at the corner of Woodman and Research, as shown here. And if you look at the record plan, they included Donation Circle in that record plan. Even, it's already been dedicated as public right of way. So one of the comments from engineering that we know will change the record plan a little bit is they're going to remove Donation Circle from the record plan altogether. So, so I know, Ray, you had sent an email after the report went out, asking to see the proposed, proposed lot lines on top of the existing conditions. And those are what those red outlines show today, or are on the screen now. The current lot line is just the outer, outer box. And then the proposed record plan would just split the lot approximately in the area shown there on the screen. There's the record plan in question. Again, the existing lot lines, the proposed lot line. And some of the staff comments, this is included as, in your packet as a part of attachment D, that we know that they'll have to change. First, the lots aren't labeled correctly. So they need to label the two lots as Lot 1 and Lot 2. There is an existing drive that connects from Donation Circle over to the Life Connection Parking Lot. We want them, and this engineering concurred with the, the planning recommendation as well, to overlay a access easement on top of that existing drive, to make sure that the property that contains the Life Connection Building can get access to Donation Circle and doesn't need to rely on access to Woodman or Research in the future. There's a small, city-owned right-of-way parcel along Woodman Drive that directly adjoins the property. We want them to dedicate that as public right-of-way. Just a minor oversight, this, if you look at the record plan closely, it still says the City of Kettering owns these properties and we don't. Those were sold off, I believe, three years ago. So they need to update the property ownership. And also, Montgomery County Environmental Services, they had a chance, they've had a chance to review the record plan, and they have requested that a 20-foot wide utility easement be overlaid on top of the existing 16-inch public water line that runs along Research Boulevard. As a part of the review, staff reviewed the record plan based on the zoning requirements. The property in question is Zoned BP or Business Park, and it sits in the suburban business or SB pattern district. Within that zoning district, there are no minimum lot size or minimum frontages. So it meets those requirements. And none of the, the proposed lot line won't create any non-conformities as it relates to minimum setback requirements. So the proposed record plan complies with the base zoning standards. Staff also reviewed the request through the lens of our subdivision standards. And I already mentioned the requested access easement. And that's being requested because Section 1111.23, access to a street in our subdivision standard states that the, they had to provide, they had to provide adequate access to the property from a public street. So that ingress egress easement would meet that requirement. And then finally, Section 1117.03, the requirements related to contents that need to be included with final plats. And that was included, the review of this section was included as attachment C, as a part of your packet. For the most part, they meet all those requirements. There are a few. I already mentioned the easements that have been requested. They need to show the easements on the final record plan. I already mentioned, they need to number the lots in numerical order. That's, we are recommending a condition to that effect. And then finally, the, the surveyor needs to certify the final record plan when it comes in for signatures by the planning commission. So, we do have a recommendation. But before I get to that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Homsy?
No.
No questions. Final recommendation?
Thank you, Chairman. The staff recommendation is that the planning commission motion to approve the record plan, case number PC-24-007, with the following conditions, which must be met prior to the provision of planning commission signatures and the final record plan. Number one, the final record plan be sealed by the surveyor. Number two, a permanent access easement for ingress and egress be provided along the existing drive from Donation Circle to the lot containing the Life Connection Building. Number three, the 20-foot wide utility easement for the public water line along Woodman Drive, or I'm sorry, that should be along Research Boulevard. Fix that right now. Along Research Boulevard, as requested by, by Montgomery County Environmental Services, MCES be shown. Number four, the two lots be labeled as Lot 1 and Lot 2. Number five, the city-owned right-of-way parcel that directly adjoins the, the subject site be dedicated as public right-of-way. site be dedicated as public right-of-way. Number six, the owner's name of the subject property be corrected. And finally, number seven, the applicant agrees to coordinate with and adhere to any recommendations made by the city engineer, Montgomery County, and other utility reviewers, and the opportunity for recommended changes to be provided by utility reviewers sunsets two weeks following the approval of the record plan by the planning commission. And that's the recommendation.
All right. Unless we have any other questions? Mr. Woski, I believe we've got a motion.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chairman. I have the following motion, whereas an application has been received from Matthew Wadsworth, President and CEO of Life Connection of Ohio, owner of the property at 2800 Donation Circle, Kettering, Ohio 45420, requesting approval of a replat of 2800 Donation Circle. This replat would split the existing lot into two lots for future development, with one lot being 2.9327 acres in size, and the other being 5.2920 acres in size. And whereas, the request constitutes approval of a final record plan for the newly described lots. And whereas, the planning commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a final record plan for the Miami Valley Research Park, Section 6B, be approved with the following conditions, which must be met prior to the provision of planning commission signatures on the final record plan. Number one, the final record plan drawing be sealed by the surveyor. Number two, a permanent access easement for ingress and egress be provided along the existing drive from Donation Circle to the lot containing the Life Connection building. Number three, the 20-foot wide utility easement for the public water line along Research Boulevard, as requested by Montgomery County Environmental Services, be shown. Number four, the two lots be labeled as Lot One and Lot Two. Number five, the city-owned right-of-way parcel that directs, directly adjoins the subject site be dedicated as public right-of-way. Number six, the owner's name of the subject property be corrected. Number seven, the applicant agrees to coordinate and adhere to any recommendations made by the city engineer, Montgomery County, and other utility reviewers. The opportunity, recommended changes to the provided, to be provided by utility reviewers sunsets two weeks following the approval of the record plan by the planning commission, approved by the planning commission this 20th day of May 2024. I move for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions on the motion? Call the roll, please. Yeah?
Mr. Woski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Urbis?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes. All right. Item number four, audience participation for items not on the agenda. Mr. Reeson, I believe you had something you would like to bring forward? Sure, let's do that, Wes, where it's packaged up.
Sorry for the confusion earlier.
That's okay.
I think we both confused each other a little bit, so. My name is Craig Reeson, I live at 3017 Black Hawk Road here in Kettering, Ohio, and like I was telling you earlier, I've been here for about four years now. I come from Indiana, and I like it here better. And so, I had a, I had a couple careers that, that I took over there, and during the process of some of my career choices over there, I always done something else, and I've always been really successful at selling new and used tires. So, when I came over here to Kettering, I started looking for, for buildings to operate out of, that would be suitable for myself and the community, and to deal with, basically. So, I found a, I found a property, which is the old Kawasaki building, it's at 3916 Wilmington Pike. I'm sure most of you know where that is. And so, with that property, I've had a lot of, I've had a lot of difficulties with that property, to say the least. I've had several meetings with the city manager, Mr. Greason, I've had meetings with the mayor, I've had several meetings with Tom. And so, some of the concerns are the setbacks at that building, you know, when that, when that Kawasaki was, the, the building down there was being operated by Kawasaki, I believe, so I believe it was operated for 45 years down there. Well, then, when that property closed, it changed hands, it come out of compliance. And so, unfortunately, I've had a really hard time dealing with several different issues with that building. But that building is a really, I mean, most of you maybe have not been in there recently, it does need some, some upgrades and stuff like that. I had actually Patrick Hillier, that was here earlier, city architect, come out, looked through that building for me, and it did meet the building code. And I also had the fire marshal come out, Dwayne Stitzel, and he walked through there. And one of my concerns was, is whether that building down there needed like a fire suppression system. And so, those, those guys come down and, and took a look at the building for me. Now, that's not actually on the record, because I wanted them to come in and look at, at, at that place before I actually bought it or leased it. I didn't want to get into a mess. So, like I said, I've had several issues with that, with that particular property down there, and you know, some of it's landscaping, you know, we can't, we, we just can't meet the demands of the city, because, you know, part of that parking lot down there actually belongs to the railroad. And so, they, in their, in their agreement, their, their lease, and their stipulations are, you know, they don't want anybody coming on the land, they don't want no trees and vegetation down there, and you can't work with the railroad, those guys are federal, they don't, they're, they're just not easy to work with, to, to say the least. And so, with that being said, I, I have talked with Tom, and the, some of the, the other city officials, as I've stated, and the problem is, is to a certain extent, you know, we've talked about variances, and, you know, for landscaping, or for the retaining wall, because there's apartments that the city let come in next to that, okay? Well, when they did that, they, the, the gap was smaller than 50 feet, I want to say it's like 27 foot or something like that. Well, I can't really just pick up the building and move it over, you know, so that, that creates problems, and there's a lot of issues with that. So, the zoning department, their hands are kind of tied to a certain degree, and so, what I'm going to ask from, from you ladies and gentlemen here today, is to work with me, to help me to, to get my business up and going. It's, it's been, I've actually dealt with this for over a year now, I've talked to probably everybody, I've gotten shuffled around through so many different departments, and, you know, it's taken, you know, sometimes I might ask for paperwork, but I think I'm, I'm basically, I'm told I'll get in a couple days, and that turns into four weeks. You know, I've told, I've told the mayor and the city manager, if you could please help out, we really appreciate it. And they have, they have done, you know, a pretty extensive amount of work into, into this issue. Matter of fact, the, the most recent meeting I had was with the city manager in March, and he said, well, give me a week or so, and to his credit, he said, I'm not going to rush nothing. He said, so I'm, he called me in, and he said, hey, it's going to take me another week. And I said, well, I feel like as long as you're trying to help me out the best you can, I'm fine with that. So, so he did. And I've got a, I've got a five-page email here from him, I've got several other different document, occu, documents that I've, I've got for zoning codes and stuff like that. So, it's been very difficult, and at the end of the day, today, what I would like to ask is, is for you folks to help me out, you know, the best we can, to get that building occupied, and to bring it in compliance as much as we can. And so, you know, like I said, there might be some variances or something like that that need to be discussed or talked about, or, there's a, there's a lot of shuffling around, and there's been a lot of frustration, I think, within the city, and with myself on this particular issue. So, if, if you guys would so kindly do that, I'd appreciate it.
Well, we, we can do what we can do, and with that is that basically, we, once an application is made, you know, working with city staff or whatever, then, you know, assuming that it needs to come before the planning commission, then, you know, we will review that, approve, deny, continue, you know, all those sort of things I said at the very beginning, but, you know, any variances really run through a different board, it's the BZA. So, really, the process that you've been doing is, you know, working with staff, I don't know if you've, what your business arrangement is with this particular property, it sounds like it's got some issues, and obviously, it's on a, you know, Wilmington Pike, which has got a ton of traffic, which from that standpoint is good, but there, there just might be some things that can't be fixed easily, at least, that's what it sounds like, because you are, you are doing quite a bit of due diligence, and I, you know, credit you for that, but yeah. On our own, the planning commission just can't sort of say, that sounds like a great idea, and go ahead and do that. We do have the ordinances of the City of Kettering, and, and that's what staff is looking at in terms of what's going on, but, I mean, you know.
Follow the process, basically.
Yeah, we, we can't, based on the charter, we just can't shortcut that. We don't have any legal sort of ability to do that, so.
Right. And I understand that, and I'm not asking to bypass them, I know one of the, one of the things that they've asked for here is, you know, you gotta, you gotta have plans, you know, you gotta have an architect, right? So, I've, I've tried my best to deal with some architects here lately, but they're not exactly reliable, so.
Okay.
I've had some issues.
I, I won't tell you that I'm an architect by trade, so, maybe, maybe I will just continue that.
But, you know, it's, it's been, you know, really, it's, it's been an issue sometimes just to get these guys to call you back, and, and to even get a start to it. So, you know, one of the reasons I wanted to come here and talk to you guys is because being, I have talked with the, with all these guys and some others, you know, there's probably going to be, and I do understand, as I've talked to these guys, you know, there is a process, but some of the, some of the paperwork and all that stuff does, will be eventually coming in front of you, you know, so.
We, we look forward to the day.
Yeah, well, me too.
Yes, I'm, I'm sure, so, once again, you know, appreciate it, and like I said, we'll just look forward to seeing an application come through someday, and we'll see where we end up.
All right, thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. All right, other business, signing of plats, do we have any plats?
There's one plat.
Okay.
For signature.
Very good. Communications and reports, zoning code amendment discussion.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I knew the agenda was going to be, there'd be a, at least one pretty long case on the agenda, so I skinny it down a little bit, kind of just go over some of the, some of the, some of the zoning code amendments that we're working on, and I kind of split up the presentation for a couple code provisions that would deal mostly with residential projects that like homeowners want to do, and our code makes it maybe a little bit too, too confusing, a little too tricky, and then a couple in the non-residential, particularly industrial side. So, a couple of the ones that David and I, and others in the office hear about and deal with quite a bit, are people who want to build, when the zoning code was updated in 2015, there were two categories of like detached and enclosed accessory structures that were created, there was like a shed, 100 square feet or less, and then there's the roofed enclosed accessory structure category, once you fall into the, and those are just the same structure, they're just bigger than 100 square feet. But there's kind of a, a gray, there's an area where you, when you're still a shed, but you're not quite a garage, for what a typical, like a, when you look at one of these structures, and they still are held to similar architectural standards that a detached garage would be held to. And we kind of want to make that a little bit simpler, for particularly the structures that are maybe between a, a little bit, over 100 square feet, but maybe 160 square feet, to hold them to the same require, uh, requirements, where they probably have to match the colors of the principal structure, and maybe the shape, because I know that one thing, I wasn't here when the zoning code was amended, but I know one thing that was done, that changed the architectural requirements for these structures a lot, was that once you, once you broke 100 square feet, you couldn't really have the barn-shaped roofs anymore, unless you happen to live in a Dutch colonial house. Uh, there was just a requirement that was created, that the roof shape had to match the principal structure, and I'm sure back in 2015 and 2016, there was a lot of resistance to that, but now it's, for the most part, people are accepting of it. But the other, the main things that we run into are some of the other architectural standards, like the orientation of the materials, if you have a horizontal, a house that's horizontally sided, it's very expensive to put horizontal siding on your shed, it just, it's very, you can do it, it's just very expensive. So, we try to find other ways to help people meet the requirements, adding windows, adding flower boxes and things like that, and it's very time consuming, and a lot of people probably argue you don't get a lot of benefit, because a lot of these are behind privacy fences and things like that. So, we want to loosen some of those requirements for the structures that fall within that 100 to 160 square foot area, and if there's no concerns with that, we'll roll that into our next amendment. Any, any questions about that?
I like it.
Okay, and this, I put a couple of the actual code provisions, this is actually in the code, are shed storage structures, less than 100 square feet, these have no, other than height limitations and setbacks, there's really no strict requirements. Once you get over 100 square feet, that's when these architectural requirements kick in. Again, colors are easy to meet, that's a pretty easy standard to meet, architectural style's pretty easy, it gets trickier when you get into materials and visual character, and we want to make that a little bit easier for people to, to meet. The next, we loosened some of these standards a couple of years ago, when I first started, you weren't allowed to have a patio in your front yard, technically. Uh, those are defined as just like a recreational space, where the, it's either wood or concrete usually, that's six inches or less above grade. So, we, we created a provision where you could have these in your front yard, and that upper left corner is an example, that wasn't permitted three years ago. You would have had to build a roof over it to make it a front porch, and those worked just fine. We have, have approved several around town, they look very nice. And we allowed the, and another thing that happened when the zoning code was amended, I don't know exactly how the old, what, what the language in the old code was for front decks, where you have just an elevated wood platform uncovered, but they're not permitted today. And we're not suggesting that we allow them again, but what we are suggesting is that we, but you basically take the allowance for patios and allow the platform to be elevated, so that if you have a, a front door like this, so you don't have to create a scenario where you have a little stoop, and you step down, and then you pave a pad, and you have a patio, because a lot of people come in and they want to build, whoops, they basically want to build what's on the screen now without a roof on it, and that's not permitted today, because it's, it's not a patio, it's not a stoop, and it's not a porch. But, again, this is a little bit smaller than what most people want, come in and want to build, but we want to allow people to do things like this, even if it's not covered. We'd have to, similar to patios, they're limited to eight-foot, eight-foot depth, they have to be cut off in the driveway, because we had to create that provision to prevent, feel from parking on them, because people will occasionally come in with a drawing and say it's a patio, and it's obviously a driveway. So, another mi, another minor change that would make a lot of residents very happy is to loosen the requirements for them to have elevated, what are essentially elevated patios, that aren't covered, hold them to the same architectural requirements that we do other things. Because one of the main things that we noticed is, those front decks, I think the main thing that made them look not the best is the railing being the generic pressure-treated wooden railing you'd see in your backyard, we would still not allow those, it would have to be something more like a patio in the upper left-hand corner, if you wanted a railing around it. So, are there any concerns about that? Okay. The next, and this deals more with, as a part of the last zoning code amendment that we made, we added a section to our nonconformity chapter that is titled Substitution of Standards for Nonconforming Sites, and that was mainly created to make it easier, if you have a site that has been occupied, and the, the use is changing, and it triggers full compliance... and it triggers full compliance, uh, that we can approve certain modifications to what the minimum standards are. Again, if I remember correctly, when that was presented before, the goal was not to lower the bar, but if the bar is in a location that doesn't make sense, let's modify it. And the big one that came out of that was our curbing requirement. If you change the use, you are suddenly required to add curbs to parking lots that weren't designed for it. Huge amount of cost added to projects, relatively environmentally damaging. Looks better, looks crisper, because we've been socially conditioned to think that that looks clean and crisper. Not a lot of benefit when it comes to making the site more functional. So we really want to expand that section to allow us, and this might be a little hard to read, I apologize, to allow us to modify, to modify some of the standards even further for non-conforming sites. And I know when we had a works, a study session here several months ago, on the screen now, the black text is in the code today, the red text and some, there might be, it might be blue in a few areas, our proposed modifications. Uh, this is the modification of standards section that we have to our access and driveway section. Because our code, and our code before had the same provisions about drive, things like driveway spacing and access drive spacing and things of that nature. And again, when you change the use or do a major redevelopment, you're required to bring the whole site into compliance with today's standards, uh, which most of the time works just fine. But we do have, we did, when the code was rewritten, we did acknowledge there were, there were scenarios where it made sense to allow the staff to modify those requirements. And that's what's on the screen today. The problem is, one of the things you have to meet in order to modify the requirements is to meet, is to prove that you have a practical difficulty in accordance with the, basically the same factors that we use when we evaluate variance requests, that are what we call the Duncan factors. And it, it's very difficult to prove that you have a practical difficulty because normally it's not impossible to meet the standard. But sometimes, again, it just doesn't make sense to do so. So when it comes to our driveway standards, we do have some scenarios where people come into redevelop projects and they have old driveways. This is one example here. Where this is at the corner of Culver and Dorothy. It's the old Morris Funeral Home Building. And right now, these driveways are conforming. They need to align with the driveway across the street or be 75 feet or further away from it. And they can meet the standards. It's not impossible to remove those two driveways and put a new one in that aligns with the driveway across the street. But I showed this to our traffic engineer and they're like, that function's just fine. This, this is a low-traffic road. You're probably never going to have anyone turning left out of this site to turn down to the dead-end cul-de-sac at the end of Culver. But it, it's not impossible to meet the standard, but it's extremely expensive and adds no functionality to the property and the use of the property. So we wanted to delete the Duncan factor section and add a, add a section that basically says, if the traffic engineer is okay, make the traffic, make sure the traffic engineer is okay with it, while also giving staff the ability to impose certain conditions on the approval if they, if we are able to approve a modification of this standard. And one, one example that might come up occasionally is making the access points limited access, right-in, right-out or right-left-in, right-out only. Because again, meet it, this site doesn't meet the Duncan factors to approve a modification. But functionally, it makes all the sense in the world to not require them to spend thousands of dollars for something that wouldn't really make the site any more usable. Any comments about that? Okay. And we have the same section in our, and this has been in our landscaping chapter for a long time. They still have to, in our, our landscaping and screening, uh, chapter for a long time. And we have approved modifications. Normally it comes up if there's, if the buffer yard is too narrow or we'll have like that, uh, the last conditional use that came here in March for the binocular, uh, the warehouse location. They had a masonry wall that was effectively seven feet tall or taller relatively adjoining houses, a really narrow area to plant stuff so that we let them put some smaller trees in there, uh, retain the retaining wall and fix it up so it lasts longer. We were, we were able to approve a modification by using this provision. But again, the, it still probably makes sense to not have them have to meet the Duncan factors because the biggest one here is making sure that the alternative arrangement that is proposed will provide a similar comparable level of protection imposed by the original standard or condition. Because it allows people to be a little more flexible. Still expecting people to meet the standard, but meet it in a different way. Don't know if there's any questions about that? And then the last one, this is just a word for word from our code today we, in our non-conformity chapter. And the main reason I put this in here is to get, this deals with non-conforming sites. I wanted to highlight one exemption that was put into the code a while ago. Um, I think when it was originally written. If not, it was one of the quick, the early amendments. And an exemption to this section was added for if a site has, is non-conforming with regards to the location of an off-street parking area per the table in the code that regulates where parking areas can be located, shall be allowed to retain the location of such a non-conforming off-street parking area provided that at least one of the following conditions is present. I don't have, I don't have to read all of them. But there's just one example that our code, we've created exemptions in the past and we just, as we review more plans, we think that there's more locations to add. Not, again, not waivers of standards, but an acknowledgement that exemptions should be provided. And one of those, a couple of those deals with non-conforming architecture. Today in our code, if a principal facade is modified by 10% or more measured in length or wall area, um, it shall be brought fully into compliance with all of the architectural standards of chapter 1149, which since I've been here, that hasn't generated a huge number of issues. But it has slowed, like people, it makes it a little bit tricky where you have to kind of be, it makes it tricky to do some relatively minor things to smaller buildings. Or if you have an industrial building where you want to redo like your loading docks or something, it can, it can trip up this standard. And some of these buildings were designed without, it'd be very difficult to add a parapet wall. It'd be very difficult to meet the transparency requirements and some other things. So this is more geared toward existing buildings within the I or industrial or LI light industrial pattern districts. These are your tentacles, uh, the industrial buildings, all Plainfield, uh, Gateway Circle, Culver. These are buildings that were built at a different time. And a lot of them can meet the requirements, but it can be very tricky, especially if you come in and want to do an addition. It can trigger a lot of requirements and, quite frankly, a lot of times they're very difficult to meet for some of those older buildings. So this is a proposed exemption, uh, for buildings in the I or LI pattern district. Uh, when an addition or modification is proposed to a structure that is non-conforming in regards to architecture, such structure shall be permitted to retain the non-conforming architecture provided the following standards are met. Number one, the structure is existing, was legally constructed and is located in the I or LI pattern district. Number two, the site meets or will be made to meet the streetscape foundation landscaping and buffer yard requirements of chapter 1147. Number three, the site meets or will be made to meet the screening requirements of section 1147.06.3.c. And that's the parking lot screening requirement. Number four, no architectural, no architectural non-conformities are increased. Number five, the addition is conforming. And six, in the case of a modification to an existing facade, the portions of the facade being modified are conforming. And again, this has been discussed internally, mainly as they relate to buildings in the I and LI pattern district. And we have seen, we haven't seen a huge amount of interest in projects on those properties, but we have seen some. And it, having a more flexibility would be very helpful when discussing the application process with the business and property owners. Are there any concerns about that? And then finally, this is the, this is the section that we added, uh, or council chose to add the last time. And that's a modification of standards for non-conforming sites, subject to several standards. Again, this, this is not a waiver of requirements. It's a modification. Uh, we added that. We, we, we made sure to include that to be clear that this is not intended to basically allow our standards to be thrown out the window in the case of a new development or addition or new project. But occasionally we'll, we'll be reviewing projects and a standard will be tripped that's very difficult or impossible to meet. Or it's possible to meet, but it just won't increase the functionality of the site or the aesthetic benefit of it, or, or the aesthetic character of it. And one of those that's come up a little bit are, uh, like, existing luminaire height requirements. The, the 500 buildings over here, office, office use the maximum. In today's zoning code, the maximum height of a light pole is 20 feet. Those are about 28. But if they come in and want to swap out the heads for something different, once they modify 25% or more of the existing lighting on the site, it triggers full compliance and all of the lights need to be brought into compliance, including the pole heights. Why?
I would agree, why? Because it says so in our code, that's why, so.
So there's things like that, again, and some of the other modifications that we're proposing to make would actually increase the maximum height in office districts to 25 feet because 20 is, it's, it's 25 feet for civic uses that, and commercial uses that adjoin residential properties. So that can be churches or schools, it's 25 feet. So it makes sense for it to be 25 feet in office, for office uses as well. But still, they're still too tall, even today, even if we were to make that amendment. So we want to expand this section to some more sections, like pole height requirements and potentially, uh, for some of our industrial properties, like, uh, we don't allow channeling fences in side yards today. And that's probably a good thing for the most part. But again, it's not hard to trigger full compliance. And some of, like on Plainfield, I don't think there's, there might be three properties that don't have a channeling fence in the side yard today. And it'd be nice to get them replaced for, for better-looking fences. But if someone is doing a, um, a minor project, it could unintentionally trip full compliance and sink, either sink the project or delay it for a long time for that standard. So those are kind of what our thought process is on some of these changes. I wanted to make sure there weren't any alarm bells and going off in anyone's head before we proceed with...
Speak now or hold your peace. I think we're good here.
That's, uh, that concludes my quick work session on that.
All right. Any other communications and reports? Mr. Robillard?
Thank you, Mr. Rethman. Uh, I do just want to update you all on the comprehensive plan process that we are about to undergo. Yes, believe it or not, we are undertaking update of our comprehensive plan. Last time it was, uh, adopted was in 2002, so it's good 2022.
Should we try to conference Rich Schultz in here real quick?
Yeah, I know. So it's been quite a while. So that is what we are undertaking here at the moment. The city council has approved for us to, uh, expend money on doing that. So I wanted to just introduce, here's what, what it is. Here's what the process is going to be that we're planning so far. But also just to update you a little bit on comprehensive plan, it really just identifies the land use issues, uh, proposes direction, solutions to various land use issues that we have around town. We, the city council just recently adopted the strategic plan, which I sent you earlier today. And if any of you want hard copies, I'll be happy to provide that. Uh, but in that, in that strategic plan, there was mentioned several areas that the city council wants to accomplish. And a lot of those are have land use implications. For instance, livability, creating a sense of place within the community, uh, developing a town center, um, looking for opportunities for economic, looking, how do we improve economic opportunity? And what do we do to, um, create some strategic policies or, uh, ideas for redeveloping different areas of town? Uh, so that's the why. Wen is introducing it to the planning commission tonight. I also want to introduce it to the city council, hopefully next week. And then we will issue an RFP to, for outside consultant to help us do all that. Uh, we'll have a series of planning commission meetings. You are the planning commission of the city of Kettering and that is one of your, uh, directions or, uh, things that you're supposed to do is create the comprehensive plan. We'll do, collect background information, data to help support the things that we want to do, make proposals, finally having the planning commission approve the plan and the city council with the final approval. Of course, we'll have the planning commission involved with it. We do plan on having, uh, some public input on that. Probably not to the same extent that the strategic plan had. Uh, but I do think it is important to make sure that we do collect as much public input as possible on those issues that we're going to be studying. Of course, staff input and other stakeholders that might be involved. That's really about it. But I just wanted to update you that we are undergoing this, this process. And I'll be back much more often to visit you guys.
Sounds great. Any other communications and reports? All right, planning commission comments? Mr. Mosky? None? All right, I have no comments. So with that, we will adjourn this regularly scheduled meeting of the city of Kettering Planning Commission for Monday, May 20th, 2024, at 9:06 PM until our next regularly scheduled meeting.